I know.
Says a toddler.
Are you nervous?
For what?
I don't know.
Should we be?
Should we be? I don't think so.
Okay.
Call to order, the August fifteenth, regular meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Good evening. First order of business, item one point two, adoption of the agenda and entertaining a motion.
So moved second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. We'll move to item two point one, announcements, and I'll ask Shawna to acknowledge the gifts.
All right, thank you Jonathan. There were eighteen gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of eight thousand, two hundred, thirty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents. And there were twelve gifts received for the Ralphreyder Food Shop this period for a total of twenty-two thousand, one hundred, thirteen dollars. It's recommended that the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Great, thank you. Additional announcements, upcoming meetings, there's a work session on Thursday, September fourteenth from five to seven, and a regular meeting of the board on Tuesday, September nineteenth at seven P. M., both here at the District Service Center. Item two point two, superintendent's report.
Thank you Jonathan, I do have a few updates tonight. First, I want to mention that fall activities have started, so we are back. Monday was the first official day for Minnesota State High School League activities. Always great to see so many of our students back in and around our schools. And then in addition, registration is upcoming for community education activities this fall, so the catalog is online. And for those watching at home, if you or your child think you might be interested in activities this fall, I just want to encourage everyone to take a look at that catalog. There are just so many opportunities for people of all ages to sign up and choose from this fall, so encourage you to take a look at that. Next, I'd like to highlight one of our nine sixteen programs. Earlier this month, I had a chance with a number of board members to visit the home that was constructed by our students in the nine sixteen constructions occupation program. We were fortunate to have this partnership with the nine sixteen schools that allows our students to have hands-on experiences in the trades. The home they built is a single-family home, it's absolutely beautiful, it's over in North St. Paul, they have an agreement with the city of North St. Paul to get the lots and access. Wonderful addition to that neighborhood. And what's interesting is the lot immediately adjacent to the home that was built is being reserved for the home they will build this year for another group of students to have that opportunity and experience. And I just wanted to highlight this because it really is one of those tangible examples of kids having hands-on experience in careers that they want to go into post-high school. So just a really great opportunity, and I want to thank all of the nine sixteen staff and congratulate all of our students who had a chance to be part of that project, just really amazing. I also want to recognize one of our staff members this evening. Some of you may know Genesis Works, the organization. Their mission is to provide pathways to career success for high school students, and they provide skills training, meaningful work experience, and mentor relationships. They work with schools to create pathways into careers of interest for students while simultaneously helping employers fill those positions they're looking for out in the workforce. Just an amazing partnership, it has been very impactful, quite a number of our students here in the Moundsview Public Schools. But it really takes focus and dedication from the adults who are part of that to guide, connect, and support our students as they participate in those opportunities. And tonight, I'm proud to let you know that Angie Zappa, one of our own, career and technical education teacher for Moundsview Public Schools, was selected as the recipient of the school champion of the year award from Genesis Works. So, just a fantastic. Congratulations Angie, I'm sure you're out there, we'll see this later, reached out to her already, just great job, very, very proud of you. And finally, as we prepare for the start of the new school year, I want to highlight some of the principal changes that have taken place at our school buildings. As you know, Kristi Abbott has moved from Island Lake to Turtle Lake, so she'll be the new principal at Turtle Lake this fall. Bill Kundig took Kristi's place and is the new principal at Island Lake. And Andrea Johnson was an associate principal, but is now the principal at Sunnyside Elementary. We also have a number of new associate principals joining our teams this year, and that information is all going out through individual schools. So, if you're watching at home tonight, know that you can probably get that information from your school, but we'd encourage any and all of you interested in meeting our new leaders to reach out to them. Stop in and visit this fall, I'm confident you'll be excited to meet them, and they'll be excited to meet you out in our schools. With that, all in my report.
Thanks Chris. I'll move this to item three point oh, approval of the consent agenda, any motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. We'll move to item four point one, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four district operational plan.
And thank you. Yeah, tonight, I'm bringing back the district operational plan for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. For the public, board members have had the opportunity to go through these goals several times. This year, there are three priority goals and seven total goals. I'll just walk through the goals quickly, the seven goals are pre-kindergarten, kindergarten outreach, so that's the first focus area, and that is a priority goal. We're also looking at career and college opportunities, that's an expansion of some of the work that is already underway and started last year. We are looking at our health, safety, and security work, that again will be a priority goal for the district this year. Completing a review of our middle school program, and also a review of the athletics and activities program are also goals for this year. We intend to conduct a formal audit of our technology program, that is a priority goal this year. And of course, this is a year where all of our contracts are up, so completing the contract negotiations with all of our employee groups rounds out the seven goals for this school year. Over the last months, we've had a chance to go through these in great detail and look at them, both last spring and this fall. As a result of those meetings, the final draft that's in your packet is where we've landed, we have made no additions or edits since the last time you have seen that, so we're bringing it tonight for your approval of that operational plan.
Open it up for any questions that the board may have for the superintendent, I know we've spent a lot of time on this over the course of the last several months. Any other burning questions?
Not really a question, but just kind of a comment to the public that, like we said, we've gone over some of these, some of these are continuation from last year. And I just think it's really encouraging that Chris and your team really took thoughts from board, thoughts from parents and community members to really take a look at what the goals were for this year, and be responsive to kind of what we're hearing from our community. That, as we know, education and our students' experiences are constantly changing, so we need to continue to reevaluate, not to say that there is anything going wrong in any of these programs, but it's great to take a new look at them and see if improvements can be made, so appreciate that.
Thank you Heidi, and we have a schedule, and as we go through the balance of the school year, the board and the public will get consistent updates on all of these goals, multiple updates on the priority goals as we go through the year to keep you updated in our progress and what's happening.
Well, and as a reminder, seven goals, which is lofty, three priority goals, and this is what we'll evaluate you and your team on. As we go through the year.
Yep. So, thank you.
Level of confidence.
Beautiful.
Any other motion to approve the operational plan as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and excitedly seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. We've got a plan.
Thank you.
Excellent. Move to item five point one, enrollment update. Welcome, Reese, you're gonna give us the numbers, the rundown.
Good evening. Enrollment will continue to follow the board-approved class size parameters. We will continue to closely monitor enrollment as we move forward. Some enrollment changes continue to evolve as more information becomes available from families. And we continue to enroll students daily.
And I jump in here too, what you're looking at right now is current numbers. It was interesting, I was talking to Principal Durand over at Pike Lake, who, you know, with kindergartner kids coming in, they actually know that there are kids whose siblings are already registered, they just gotta get the kindergarten numbers and registration. So, we went through some of that at the work session and showed you, we're confident we'll hit our projections moving forward, but know that that's active and happening at each of our schools. So if anybody watching knows that some of our kindergarten families and kindergartners that maybe haven't quite finished up their paperwork, please encourage them to do that, we constantly are reaching out and wanting to make sure that that gets reflected in our updates as we go forward too. And of course, the final numbers that we often look back at will be October first, so we compare that annually.
So I see that these estimates are as of eight-four.
Right.
I feel like in previous years, we've had, you know, more current, especially as we're coming into the beginning of the school year, kind of like, you know, more timely updates.
On enrollment.
Our enrollment.
Yep.
Since this is now ten days old.
We can get those, we're doing it every single week, so we can certainly pass those along to the board and make sure we have it. We have a formal look every week and are talking to schools multiple times a week as they're working with families and folks coming in to enroll with us. So, I'll make a note and make sure we're, I can pass those along too.
Yes, I'd just like to see whatever we have today.
Yep.
We do, we complete that process every Friday, last week we actually did it twice, and so we're watching.
So we just didn't get those in the board report?
Correct.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, that'd be great to see that.
Yep, I'll make a note, make sure we get it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Excellent, we've got in five point two, readiness for school opening. Darren, what do you got for us? Are we ready? We're ready. Perfect.
Here tonight to provide an update on our readiness for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Start with the staffing update, pleased to report that the number of unfilled vacancies in our school district is lower than what is being experienced both nationally and in other local school districts. Throughout the coming weeks, members of our district's H. R. team, as well as building principals, school office staff, will continue to work to fill the final licensed and unlicensed positions in our schools and programs. Their commitment to our school communities is recognized and valued. Community members who are interested in employment with the Moundsview Public School District are encouraged to review the current job postings on our district's website. In particular, we are always looking for interested nutrition services staff and health professionals to serve in either a substitute or permanent capacity. Athletics and activities, Superintendent Lennox had mentioned that yesterday was the return of fall activities and athletic seasons for scholars and athletes at both of our high schools. This week, we saw approximately a thousand students at our two high schools return to begin participation at both high schools. So we're thankful for our high school administrators, activities directors, and coaches for their dedication, organization, and preparation. Next one, related to summer remodeling and maintenance projects. Throughout the district, there have been a variety of summer remodeling and maintenance projects that have enhanced our schools and buildings. We're pleased to announce at Irondale High School, a remodel of the career and college center, as well as a remodel of a few classrooms which support students who receive special education services. They're close to completion, and they will be ready for the start of the school year. Additionally, there's been some other projects that's been completed throughout the district. Annual painting and floor replacement projects have taken place, as well as the replacement of a few exterior doors. The summer projects of seal coating and concrete work are scheduled to be also completed by the end of this week. Hard work of Chris Paquette, who is the director of school operations, our site-level custodians, and our district maintenance crew members, we always appreciate their work. Next, nutrition services and transportation. These teams, both nutrition services and transportation, have been working hard to prepare for the start of the school year as well. This fall, and this is an important message for nutrition services side of things, our school district is joining the Minnesota's free school meals program. All students will be offered one breakfast and one lunch at no cost each day at school, so that's a reminder for our families and students. Additional à la carte items will be available to purchase using meal account funds. And although there's no application to receive these no-cost meal benefit, filling out the application for educational benefits is still very important to our school district. Families could qualify for a variety of free and reduced rates on many other great benefits, such as reduced or free fees on sports and activities, college application fees, transportation, and more. So we're asking families to please visit the district website for more details and access to these forms. Next, in our transportation department, team members have been collecting registration forms and communicating with district families for the better part of the summer. Routes are being finalized, and communication with our transportation vendors continues on a daily basis to help ensure that buses will be running safely and smoothly on the first day of school. As a district, we are grateful for the nutrition services employees and bus drivers who proudly serve our community every day. Finally, I'd like to share my appreciation for the staff members who play a role across the district in helping our schools and buildings be prepared for the return of students, families, and staff. So with that, I'm pleased to report that all schools will be ready to go when students return on Tuesday, September fifth.
Excellent, any questions? Like Herculean task, so thank you for all of the work that goes into this and to your team for pulling it off, if only we could do it a little sooner, because if you're like my household, we're ready to send the kids back right now. So, happy to hear that the buildings are ready as well.
Yeah, big thank you, because, you know, we really do have to do a lot of our construction and fix things in the summer, that's when we have to do things. So there's a lot of effort to stay on schedule, do things, and with supply chain issues and labor issues, it is a Herculean task, so well done and thank you.
Excellent. I'm gonna move this to item six point one, summer school and summer work by teachers, and we've got like a whole team. Angie brought a team, I love it.
Takes a village, so. Part of the village. All right, good evening everyone. So it's August, so that means it's time for us to be here to highlight all the wonderful things that have been happening this summer. As you noticed, I brought a team here to help highlight some of that work, I'll have them introduce themselves.
Ryan Lang, principal of the Snallye Kindergarten Center.
Bobby Olson, I'm the principal at the Area Learning Center.
Erin Madison, I'm the coordinator of community ed for Moundsview Schools.
So, we're excited tonight to start off with sharing some information that's happened at the elementary level, Ryan helps oversee that, and then we'll move on to what's happening at the middle level for our students. And Bobby oversees that work, and then Erin will talk about all the wonderful things happening in community ed. Well, and then with a conversation about what the teachers have been up to as they're preparing for students to come back as well.
So at the elementary level, we had summer school at our six elementary sites, as well as one kindergarten center, we did a joint combo for all incoming kindergarten students for summer school there. Across the system, in elementary, we had forty-seven classrooms, each with about six to twelve students, depending on grade level, need, some of those things. Our summer program as a reminder is a four-day-a-week program for four weeks, the dates are on the screen, and it's for mornings only. A majority of our summer school staff, both teachers and support staff, are current Moundsview employees, which we're super proud of, that builds a lot of consistency, and is really good for students in terms of connections with staff. Our small class size had a learning focus on both literacy, math, and socially emotional learning. Also at the elementary level, we utilized our partnership with Playworks, which has been at our elementary sites throughout the years. We continued that for summer school for this summer as well, around some large motor play and getting students active and engaged, as well with peers and with staff. We provided additional support staff positions, which included across the system to increase that instructional support for students, really keeping that at the focus. And lastly, we did use field trips and in-house field trips for students, really to broaden their experiences and things, even though it's in the summertime, and be able to get out and do some active things in the community.
So, I help work with middle and high school level. Middle schools, all three of them housed their own summer programs, and they ran the same dates as the elementary, they go just a little bit longer. And we really worked to maintain all of the teachers that we could from our own district, again, pretty much all of the teachers came back, they were very excited, we were super proud of that. We were able to maintain the community connection, the relationship connection, and then those really important student-to-student and student-to-teacher relationships helped foster those and build those to move into the next school year. Some of the comments from our middle school principals who were there, and middle school A. P.'s who helped run the program, they were really excited to see our sixth graders be able to come into a middle level and have that first introductory experience that's really supportive and really community-based before the start of the school year. So that's something that they would like to increase, is that partnership with elementaries to bring those sixth graders in. Some numbers for you, we had an increase of about thirty-some percent from last year, participation, we had a hundred and eighty-seven students overall in all three of our middles participate. It was steam-based programming, again, like we did last year, we really emphasized those literacy and math components, but also bringing in some fun for students, so we had field trips. There were some wonderful projects that they did on-site, and again, just connecting those students to their school communities. And I always like to share some of the success stories, right? So, obviously, relationships are huge at the middle level, and just being able to continue and build upon those was really great. We had a safe, supportive transition from elementary to middle school. I'm thinking of a specific example for our Edgewood student, it was a great opportunity for them to be able to get into the space and see it beforehand, and we were able to work with the family and really help support that transition. Again, we want to be able to build on those field trip experiences. Um, again, we want to be able to build on those field trip experiences and have some more learning outside of the classroom for students to make summer unique and fun and engaging, um, and also increase that participation, especially for those sixth-grade students who are transitioning. Then we have some lovely pictures. Um, it's my Edgewood folks. They are really good at taking pictures. So, we had a really fun time. Um, they went out every week. They went somewhere new. Um, they went to the Minnesota Air Force Museum. They went to the Walker. The police department brought in the rock climbing wall, which they've also done for the ALC. It's a great opportunity for kids to do some team building. They went to the Gibbs Family Farm, which was very fun for them. They did some T-shirt making and printing. And overall, you know, when I did my site visit, uh, at all three of the middle schools, kids were engaged. They were happy. They were having fun, um, and they were connecting with each other and adults. So, it was really successful. Transitioning a little bit to the high school credit recovery program over summer school, that is all three of our high school programs together. We were at Moundsview High School this year. So, we had a great setup. We were able to keep everybody together. Overall, we had a significant, uh, number of credits earned, which we are very, very excited about, because that can be very life-changing, um, for a lot of those high school students. So, some of the numbers, we had two-hundred-and-thirty-nine students. That's an increase from the hundred-and-thirty-five that we had participate last year. We worked very closely with the dean teams at both high schools and then, of course, at the ALC to connect families and students to their plans for success for graduation. Uh, we had two-hundred-and-four-point-oh-six. I like to include that in there, um, because every little bit counts, right? Um, and those are the credits earned. Significant increase over last year. We know that we have some gaps due to COVID, and being able to address those and move those students along is really important and powerful. We had ten students graduate, which, if that was all that happened during summer school, fantastic, that's fine. I would do it ten times over to make sure all ten of those students got their diploma. Um, we worked early on with transportation to make sure we could address any issues. We got some additional bus stops for our middle and our high school and even our elementary kiddos. They were adding those as we needed them. They were fantastic. Um, and again, early identification of student needs is really what we're looking to improve upon, um, in order to make sure that those students and those families reach their end goal, and then retaining our teachers from our high schools to teach during summer programming. We know that teaching during the school year is a challenge, and then to ask you to come back in the summer is just a huge ask, and we were very fortunate to have a lot of our teachers come back and help us again this summer. So, it was great.
Alright, and I'm going to talk a little bit about our community education programs that ran through the district. Um, so, we had summer enrichment programs, including day camp, um, and some other activities at the different schools, summer band, summer orchestra, sports camps and clinics at the middle school and high school level. Then we ran some new early childhood classes this year, and then our adult ed program. Um, so, our summer enrichment programs, um, we had a total of four-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-one enrollments, um, which is our biggest one by far. Um, and, uh, we hosted day camps at Turtle Lake Elementary again. Um, we consistently ran ten classrooms of programming. Um, everything, uh, STEM arts and sports, um, to Summer Explore, which is our new program that is run by our internal staff, which is kind of more like your traditional summer camp. Have a theme each week with, uh, STEM activity and art activity, and then structured outdoor time, um, and then lunch bunch. Um, so, we, the aim of these summer camps is they're really flexible for families in the district. Um, when we did our community survey a couple of years ago, there's a lot of programs that run all summer, and there's a lot of programs that only run once a week. And so, families were looking some, for something that was flexible to make their summer work. So, we have some students that sign up for one morning class, and that's all they do all summer. And then we have some families who sign up for all eight weeks, morning, afternoon, their kids are there for the whole day. So, like I said, um, for summer day camps alone at Turtle Lake, we had over three-thousand enrollments, three-hundred, or three-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-six, um, and of those, we had eight-hundred-and-sixty-four unique participants for the summer. Um, and then, we run our day camps Monday through Thursday. On Fridays, we offer additional field trips for those families who are still looking for, um, their students and participants to do something on Friday. Um, and we had two-hundred-and-seventeen kids enroll, enroll in those field trips. And then our additional, um, enrichment programs, um, high school camps, middle school sports camps. We have some off, um, off-district property camps that we run partnerships with, um, at Ninja Warrior Gym in Blaine. Um, we work with an equestrian center to run some horse day camps and week-long camps. Um, and then we had a new program this summer called Tyke Sports, which is for our two-year-olds through five-year-olds. Um, and so, you might have seen them on the field at Snail Lake or Pike Lake, um, trying out basketball and football and volleyball and a variety of different sports.
So, can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
So, we're, um, how are those programs staffed?
So, those programs are staffed, there's a variety of ways. So, we have, this summer, we had fourteen staff members who are district employees. Four of those were specifically committed to the Summer Explore program, which has a capacity of forty kids. So, there were two teachers and then two kind of assistants for the summer. Um, then we staff student support assistants who provide additional support, um, to students who maybe have an IEP need or some other needs that happen, um, throughout the summer to help support them emotionally, um, learning-wise, all those kind of different things. Um, and then we also work with the sped department pretty closely, because we do have some students that have some very specific needs. Um, and in those cases, we work with the sped department to staff what those needs are. Um, then we have, this summer, we had, um, four, what we call summer camp assistants. They're traditionally college and high school students who are interested in careers in education. Um, they help support the camp in general. And then, so they're helping move students throughout the day. They're sitting in on different camp sessions that maybe need an extra hand on a specific project, um, that kind of thing. And then, um, we have, uh, a summer camp coordinator who's a licensed sped teacher who's been with us. This is her fifth summer with us, and she is kind of our main go-to person on site. Um, we have an assistant coordinator who backs her up all these there. And then, um, we offer nine sessions in the morning every week and nine sessions in the afternoon. Um, four out of those sess, or two out of those sessions are our Summer Explore, which are staffed by our own staff. And the other sessions are staffed by vendors, um, who are vetted through Community Education, um, our statewide Community Ed organization. Um, so, they teach specialty classes like Minecraft coding or, um, we have a group called Kid Create, and they do like a slime art class, so they make all different kinds of slime and that kind of stuff. So, they are kind of experts in their field for before and after-school programming and then summer camps. So, they come in and do those specialized camps, and then our staff support them in our space.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Can you talk a little bit about how, how sites are, are selected for these different programs? Because I know I get questions every once in a while from parents about, like, why is Turtle Lake, right?
Yep.
The, the site that's for this age group, and so, if you could address that, I think that could be helpful.
So, for summer day camp and summer programs, um, we work closely with, um, all of our summer programming across the district. And Turtle Lake is one of our largest elementary schools, so it does have the largest number of classrooms available in the summer with the other programs that are going on. Um, the size of our program right now, we need fourteen classrooms, two gyms, um, plus a common space that can host between two-hundred to three-hundred-and-fifty students at a time for check-in, checkout, and lunch. And so, that has been the site that has been determined, um, through district channels as the best one currently. That might change in the future, depending on what other programming looks like, but that, that is what has been determined by the leadership team. Um, and then, throughout the school year, it really depends on enrollment and what, um, classes people sign up for the previous year, or if there is a group of parents that comes for it. We are always willing to try something once. We've tried Chinese a couple times at a couple different students. If, um, if we find a good provider and we're able to continue to run the class, we will. Um, but the difficulty we have, um, I know a lot of people look at some of our bigger schools and say, why are there more classes running there? We have more students to fill those classes, and so, we often have a minimum number of participants to run, so we don't want to offer too many classes, so we don't get too many kids. But if you look at our seasons, um, fall, winter, spring, and summer, we often rotate classes. So, if a class wasn't at one school in the fall, it might be there in the spring. And at a larger school, it might be offered twice, just because of the sheer number of kids.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then, these are just a couple pictures. These were from two weeks ago. You'll see these in upcoming catalogs. We didn't have them quite in time for our fall catalog. That should be arriving in your mailbox. Um, but the kids had great. There's some engineering camps up there, a volleyball camp. We had our bug discovery camp. Chess was very popular this year. Dungeons and Dragons was a new one that was super popular, and Rubik's Cubes, which you'll see on the cover of our fall catalog, was incredibly popular as well. Um, and then I'll talk a little about, about our summer music program. So, um, summer band this year had five-hundred-and-seventy enrollments. Um, for beginning band, which is students entering into fifth grade, we had two-hundred-and-eighty-three students. Um, for middle school, which is, um, students, so the middle school band program runs for students in sixth grade through those who are entering into ninth grade. That was two-hundred-and-eighty-seven students. Um, and then we did have an optional Valley Fair performance that happened, um, August fourth, um, which if you went by the high school parking lot, you might have seen four-hundred-and-seventeen students and staff loading onto buses. It is the largest performance Valley Fair has ever had on their stage, where they invite, um, students to perform. So, it's kind of really unique, um, and they had a great time. Um, and it was a, a really successful, um, summer for band, and we are seeing numbers back up to what they were prior to COVID. Um, summer orchestra has seven-hundred-and-eighty-six total enrollments, which is the largest we have seen in, um, any recent history. Um, for our beginning orchestra students in grade four are going in, they had two-hundred-and-seventy-two students. Um, grade five had two-hundred-and-fifty students. And then, this year for middle school, they changed it a little bit. We offered our traditional middle school orchestra camp, and then we also offered a symphony orchestra group as well. And between those two, um, for students entering sixth through ninth grade, there was two-hundred-and-sixty-one students. And orchestra does an optional performance at a Minnesota Twins game, which is coming up on September twenty-sixth. Um, and when we submitted our presentation, there was one-thousand-forty-one students and family members signed up to attend that performance, and they are still coming in a lot. So, it'll be, um, last year, I think we had nine-hundred and some, um, students and families go. So, this will be the largest group we've brought to the Twins game as well.
I will be one of the one-thousand-forty-one students.
Glad to hear it. I love it. I love it. Um, yeah. And so, this year too, um, for early childhood, we did offer some new summer enrichment classes. Um, they kind of tested these out in the winter, spring, and rolled out a couple more here for the summer as we developed these programs. Um, we had a hundred-and-two enrollments, uh, for eight enrichment classes, and then they did two gearing up for preschool classes to get students used to the space and used to what the form of preschool will be. And then, um, adult education summer school, we had, um, ESL classes, CompTIA security certification and classes, para educator, um, certification classes, GED diploma. Those were offered in the mornings and the evenings throughout the summer. The IT Microsoft bootcamps, IT Computer Essentials, and then we are a Pearson testing center for anybody who needs to take a test. So, we had a busy summer. Hand it back.
You might think that's enough, but no. There's more. We haven't yet talked about what the teachers have done for their own professional growth and development. So, um, the first thing I wanted to mention is that, um, over the last two days, we, um, welcomed over, uh, ninety new teachers to our systems, who are with the Shoreview Community Center over the last couple of days, and, um, a lot of excitement, a lot of energy, just really proud of this, uh, group of teachers that's coming in, and our system's going to be better because of the, the hires that were made and the teachers that we have entering our system. So, excited to have them join the team. Um, as you all know, Moundsview Public School teachers are really committed and dedicated to providing quality instruction for their students, and their commitment to professional development is evident in the work that they do over the summer. Um, teachers, they're not only willing, but also excited about using summer to really reflect on their practices and do some additional learning, uh, to get better at their craft, and our students benefit tremendously from this work that teachers do over the summer, and I'm grateful to the teachers for their dedication and the work that they do. Because what I'm going to talk about now are all optional things for teachers, right? They're not required. They're options. We, we provide them for teachers, and every year, they come back and take advantage of them. Um, so, courses that are offered, you can see the names of those professional development courses that we offer over the summer. Some of them started in the, um, spring and ended the summer. Some were just summertime courses. Some started the summer and will finish up in the fall. We had about one-hundred student, or teachers participate in these professional development courses. Um, and as I said, they're optional, and most of these courses are taught by teachers. So, they're teacher leaders who get trained, and then they provide that professional learning, um, to their colleagues. So, it's really beneficial. Another opportunity, uh, that our teachers have over the summer is to work with their professional learning communities. So, all of our professional learning communities meet over the summer. This one's not optional. Uh, they meet to reflect on the previous school year and to make plans for the upcoming school year. They find that time really valuable in the summer where they can breathe, um, really take some time to reflect and, and make those necessary changes around that. Another optional opportunity that we have for teachers, um, in the summer is to do some curriculum writing. So, they have a couple of different opportunities to do this. They can do it at their sites, and sites have resources available to support them. What I want to talk to you about tonight is those that are done at the district level. So, more that are cross, uh, cross-sites, cross-levels, uh, that we support at the, at the central office here around that. So, early childhood, did some work around social-emotional learning and creating some frameworks around some resources. Uh, so, we had a team of teachers working on that. Um, our science, if you recall, we're implementing some new science standards. We have a resource, uh, called Mystery Science at the elementary level. So, that resource is not new, but the units that we're using are new. So, teachers wanted some time over the summer to really reflect on that resource and see, uh, what units would fit into that, those resources, and then how to better align those units. So, uh, that was the work our science teachers worked on over the summer. Our elementary English language learner teachers worked also this summer. They're looking at assessments, um, and making sure that's, the, uh, instruction is aligned to the assessments that students are given around the access test that's given every February. Uh, that's a unique kind of test that students take, and so, teachers want to make sure that students have experiences around speaking and listening, um, and, and being prepared for that test. They did some work there. Um, chemistry, this is year two for our implementation of chemistry at the high school level, so, um, asked for some time to really reflect on what they had done in the previous year, make some changes and adjustments to that. Uh, NOKA Ramsey Community College, two courses. Uh, teachers have made requests to do some work this summer. One was short stories, another one was a college, around college writing. So, they're looking to really have some more student-centered, um, activities in those courses, uh, bigger scope and sequence for, uh, uh, not bigger, but, uh, to reevaluate the scope and sequence for the, those, both of those courses. Um, and typically, those courses have been, they have mentors that they work with through NOKA Ramsey Community College. In Irondale and Moundsview have different mentors, so they kind of do that work independently, but this summer, they wanted to come together across both schools. So, really valuable work that they're engaged in around that. And then our African-American history course, we're looking, uh, we have some new teachers coming in to teach that course, so bringing those teachers up to speed on that, uh, curriculum that was developed about three years ago, and then also aligning that, uh, curriculum with the US history. We're continually looking at that, and again, some more hands-on experiences for students and aligning some of those, um, assessments, um, across African-American history and US history as well. And then world history. So, we've got some new standards that hopefully will get approved this, uh, this year. Uh, so, we're starting to look at our world history, uh, courses and how we might better align, um, that work. So, just want to thank everybody who provided meaningful summer experiences for our students. We couldn't do it without, um, the leadership who helps support that, and then the teachers across the system. Um, for all the teachers to take advantage of those professional development opportunities, um, to continue to grow and make our system better for kids. So, that's what we have for you tonight. That's all.
Any, any questions?
No. Awesome work.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I want, I want to shout out to the band and orchestra teachers. All my kids have participated in summer band and orchestra, and the beginning of the summer, it sounds like perhaps barn animals are giving birth in my living room. And then by the end of the summer, like, we're playing the National Anthem. So, it's incredible, the work that they do to, to get the kids. I mean, I can't imagine sitting in a room with kids playing the violin and not pulling my hair out. So, um, amazing work. So, thank you.
And, you know, I was just, you know, reflecting on all the, um, community education, the summer enrichment programs that are offering now, and how that is so, so much more, um, so much more broad than, say, ten years ago for this district. And I think about when my kids were elementary age and trying to cobble together camps and drag them down to the University of Minnesota for their enrichment camps, maybe the Science Museum for a week, McFail, and just like this crazy calendar that, um, we used to do to try to, you know, have great opportunities for our kids every that we used to do to try to, you know, have great opportunities for our kids every summer. And now we can, it looks to me like families can just do it right here in the Mounds View schools. So I think that is absolutely fantastic and a really, such a, a growth in this program. So I think it's a really great value for our community. So thank you for all of your work in that space.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great update.
Thank you.
I'll move us down to seven-point-one updates. We'll start with AMSD and Legislative Mystery Domain.
Tough to follow that one. AMSD, we have been spending some time reviewing the new legislation from the legislature, the effects of it, getting it out to the professional staffs at our school districts and this and that. Looking at the legal aspects, the implementation challenges and sharing that with one another. We also have started our planning for our legislative agenda for next year. We are looking at, you know, like we all look at, a lot of the innovation in the classroom and what laws help promote that innovation and what laws detract from that innovation. So we're looking at those things right now. We will start very soon working with legislators to get bills drafted and, you know, already get moving on next year. So that's where we're at. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Sandra, nine-sixteen.
So nine-sixteen, I did provide all the board members and Chris a couple, a couple of documents that we had, we walked through at our August second, nine-sixteen board meeting. One is the impact report. That is kind of a summary of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And like we have our district operational plan, this is kind of what theirs is. So it is a report of, of kind of last year's, you know, just finishing up the school year in June, what, what the accomplishments were, what the goals were. I'm not going to review that for you. You can all read it at your leisure, but I want to make sure you all have that. Similarly, we spent a good portion of the meeting, August second, walking through what the, you know, this school year priorities are going to be. We'll be refining those. Superintendent brought forward some, you know, some suggestions and sat down with us and had some board input on those priorities. So we'll be finalizing those. I also included for you a, a summary of the legislative priorities and the accomplishments. They had the, you know, their lobbyists for the intermediate school districts come and provide a nice summary. Really great line-by-line item as to the, the results of the legislative session. Again, I'm not going to walk through all of that, but please take a look at that. And if you have any questions, you can ask me. Staffing, you know, staffing is always a big concern at nine-sixteen as that greatly impacts how we are able to place our students at nine-sixteen. They are, you know, progressing, yet I guess the good news, we'll start with the good news. The good news is there are only five teacher openings as of August first, whereas a year ago they had eleven teacher openings. So that's significant. There are still a significant number of EAS openings, however, about eighty-five openings. So they are employing some techniques on-spot interviews where they're having just, you know, come on in. We'll interview you right there. So they're trying to, to, you know, employ some innovative ideas to bring in new staff to nine-sixteen in those EAS positions. So again, if you know anyone that might be interested in a position, nine-sixteen's a great, a great opportunity and they're looking for people for the school year yet. Chris mentioned the Student Built Home project. What you did mention, which I'm proud to say, we had eight students from Mounds View and Irondale as part of that building crew. So it was really, really great to see that home and very excellent work and craftsmanship with that home. That, that's all I've got for nine-sixteen.
Thanks, Sandra. Move to item eight-point-one, school board member reports. Does anybody have anything to share?
Well, I was out and about with several of you this weekend and very, very proud to see the Irondale Marching Knights perform at Stockyard Days. But a wonderful thing too is to see the Night Crawler's out there gathering food for Ralph Reader. They made a substantial contribution to the community, so I thank them for that. And as folks start the school year, Ralph Reader is gathering up backpacks. They're gathering up school supplies and it's just a wonderful thing to do. So thank you much.
Other reports. I will share a few parting comments before we close out the meeting. First, candidate filing for the school board closed today. So we've got, I believe, eleven members of our community who are interested in running and serving this community. So I want to thank the candidates. There is a, I think, a three-day withdrawal period. But I appreciate everybody who's put their names out there and is embarking on that. It's important work. And, you know, I think all of us have enjoyed doing that work. I just want to kind of put a fine point on the reports we got today. It's one of my favorite meetings of the year as we talk about readiness and we talk about what our educators and our staff and our community did over the summer. I think sometimes it's easy to think that we just go on autopilot. What you saw tonight is that's certainly not, not the case. A lot of work happens over the course of our summer to continue to connect with the community and then to get our buildings ready. So a huge shout-out to, to our staff, to our custodians for doing the hard work that's often not seen, but we'll all experience after Labor Day. And that would be my final note is, you know, this is our last board meeting before we welcome our kiddos and our educators and our parents and our staff and custodians back to the buildings for the school year. So a reminder, this is my John Tanyel reminder, you know, buses are going to be out. You'll watch for kids, watch for cars, be safe, enjoy the rest of the summer. We just can't wait to, to get our, our young people back into our buildings. With that, is there anything else to come before the board? We are adjourned.